Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to Open Line tonight. I'm Carrie Sharp. We continue to dive deep into the Metro School Board races here for Metro Nashville Public Schools. Tonight, we're focusing on District 6. This is the cluster of schools that cover both Antioch and Cane Ridge. We have three of the four candidates here tonight to answer my questions, also to answer your questions, because this is Open Line. You can call in. The number is on the screen. If you're watching us via the Facebook stream, go ahead, comment a question in the comment section. We will try to get those answered. Also, thank you to our viewers on newschannel5.com. Want to introduce you to the candidates we have here tonight. Three of them I mentioned, Fran Bush, Earl Latimore, and Aaron McGee. Thank you for being here. We did also extend the invitation to Thais Hunter, who is the incumbent in this race. She did not take us up on that invite. I want to start this hour the way we did yesterday as well, asking you to introduce yourself to our audience and why you're running for school board. I'll start with you, Fran.
Sure. Hi, thanks again for having me. My name is Fran Bush, and I am a native Nashvillian. I've been in Antioch School Board District 6 since 2001. I have five sons. Their names are Desmond, Dylan, David, Daniel, Dalton. Lots of boys. And I'm also married to Dwayne Bush. We just celebrated our 20th year wedding anniversary on May 2nd.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I'm a 12-year educator. I have my own childcare academy in District 6 called Model Kids Learning Academy. I have four teachers on my staff, so I know about teachers, and making sure sustainability is always important. I also work for a nonprofit organization called In4Motion, amazing organization that help prepare our kids for ACT, starting in 5th grade, 5th through 12. I've been in the community for a long time, since 2001. I'm an HOA Board President, not one but two communities. So I have been definitely vested as far as community service, and I am a community advocate, making sure things move forward in our community. So I'm running for school board because we have to get this right. I'm very passionate about our kids and our teachers, and it's just very important that we get this budget right. Right now, the budget is in major crisis, and we have to do a better job. And I have, being an entrepreneur, I know about being fiscal responsible, and we have to get this right for our teachers, our students, support staff, bus drivers.
All right. Thank you, Fran. Earl, you're up next.
All right. Well, good evening. My name is Dr. Earl Latimore. I've been in Antioch area for about nine years. I'm married to a wonderful wife, Maria, who is a nurse with Nashville General Hospital. And so, we have been involved in public service for quite a while. I have a history in juvenile probation, as well as residential treatment facilities for at-risk youth, Department of Children's Services. And I also currently work for the State Tennessee Department of Education as educational consultant. I have two children, one who's been a graduate of MNPS, and then one who's a rising junior at Lead Academy Public Schools. And I am running for MNPS District 6 School Board because I'm ready for a change. I've been a change agent in the Nashville community for about 16 years. I chair the largest community advisory board in Davidson County, as well as sit on the Board for Prevent Child Abuse Tennessee, the Disproportion Minority Task Force. And I also have been trained in restorative practices, and I believe that social-emotional support and wraparound services are desperately needed within our district. And so, that's something that I'm fighting for, and that's my cause that I stand on as it relates to my pillars for my campaign, which is equity, accountability, resources, and leadership. And so, I believe that those things drive the work, and that's why I'm running. So, thank you for having me.
You're welcome. Thank you, Earl. And Aaron?
Well, I'm Aaron McGee, and I grew up in Nashville. I went to MNPS schools, and I'm a graduate of Maplewood High School, first-generation college graduate of Tennessee State University. And, you know, for the past 10 years, I have locked arms with parents. I've been as a youth advocate, I've locked arms with parents and with students, and I've advocated both with them for resources in MNPS schools, for college access and career readiness. You know, I'm thinking about why I actually decided to run, and my daughter, who is not of school age yet, but was my primary motivation, there's a new school, Eagleview Elementary, that is in District 6. And they open next week, and that will be my daughter's own school. And my wife and I want to make sure that we can take her to her neighborhood school. You know, I talked to, at one point, I was just having a conversation with my neighbors, but after this campaign started, I was talking to voters and constituents about the school system in Antioch. And too many folks are making the decision to drive their kids to school outside of Antioch. They're driving 45 minutes up I-24 to get the quality education that for some, they don't believe they can get in Antioch. And for me, I think that our neighborhood schools have a responsibility of being a viable option for our families, and that's a part of why I'm running. A lot of it has to do with perception. I think that MNPS schools, that we have a good school system. There are some things in place that are working well, and clearly, as we will talk about tonight, there are some things that need some fixing. But a lot of it is about perception, and Antioch is a great community with great, we have great neighbors in Antioch. And I want to be a part of also changing the perception of what our schools in Antioch offers.
Absolutely. Thank you all for introducing yourselves. I do want to mention again, this is Open Line. You can give us a call. We had some great questions from all of our viewers yesterday. I hope we will have that again today. We're only going to take one commercial break, because we just had so many great questions, and we couldn't get to them all last night. So, one commercial break tonight, so definitely you can have your voice heard. I'm also monitoring our online conversations, if you want to chime in there. We will ask those as well. I do want to get into the nitty-gritty of what's going on in District 6. Much thanks to our Investigates team, led by Phil Williams, and his reporting over the last week or two now. It started looking into the sexual harassment allegations at JFK Middle School in District 6. The principal is now on administrative leave and looking to retire at this point. Then today, we got into, does it look like Dr. Shawn Joseph is meddling in this election? I know we interviewed Fran and Aaron on this as well. I want to start with the sexual harassment investigation and get all of your takes on how the school board has handled this situation. Aaron, let's start with you this time.
Yeah. Well, my biggest concern is what I tell constituents, at the end of the day, for me, it's about staff and student safety. And so, when the allegations were made, how I see it is, Dr. Braden should have been put on administrative leave, and parents should have been made aware, the staff should have been made aware. I think, and I've said it before, it is Dr. Joseph's responsibility and the school board's responsibility at Central Office to follow the policy to a T. I am the Executive Director of a local nonprofit, Executive Director, CEO, and I talk to my staff about this all the time, and I tell them that policy is in place to protect both sides. And so, when I look at how this matter was handled, it's just kind of concerning, because if policy had been followed, I don't think that we would be getting the backlash that we currently have. But at the end of the day, I do want to commend Metro schools for the actions that they have currently taken. I talk to parents at the polls who had anxiety and frustration about sending my kid to school on the first day and potentially having Dr. Braden still in office. And so, I do appreciate the actions that have been taken. Hindsight, when the allegations were made, I do think that a quick, aggressive response would have been appropriate.
Earl?
Well, so, as a former employee of MNPS, I was a family involvement specialist and a community achieve site manager, and a candidate for District 6 Board. I don't feel personally that I am able to actually speak on that, because I feel like that's something that maybe our incumbent should be doing, as it relates to how a Board member should actually handle this particular situation. I do, at this point, hope that Dr. Joseph and Metro Nashville Public Schools HR will do what's appropriate by children and families, because at the end of the day, everything that we're doing, we're doing for the best interest of children and families. And so, I agree with Mr. McGee, as he stated, that, you know, parents definitely deserve to have an answer. They need to have a solid decision-making process, and something needs to be in place, that first day of school, when they walk in that building. But as it relates to me personally, I actually having something to say as it relates to that situation. I'm going to take a little step back on that. I don't want to give too much of my personal opinion, but I do believe that that's something definitely that our incumbent needs to step up to the plate and actually address.
And Fran, I'd like to give you a chance to respond to this. How do you think the school board has handled this investigation?
Well, first and foremost, with any allegations, you have to take it seriously. Take it seriously. And with the Me Too movement, because across this country, we have seen so many people that have been put in the same circumstance and situation. And because of this allegation, or any allegation, it should have been handled quickly. And of course, parents got to be put on notice. Teachers have to be put on notice. And all of this failed, just because of how they handled the situation. So it's very important that it is understood that what happened was definitely a delay in reaction, and I am happy that Dr. Braden is now considering retirement. And there's going to be a lot of, I feel we may have some backlash from what happened, and that's something that we have to be faced with, because of not being responsible when it came to this action.
The focus of Phil's reporting today had to do with the appearance of election interference from Dr. Joseph, and also the district as well, started with a tweet, and then also other social media posts by Dr. Joseph himself, and then also the district platforms tweeting that they're looking forward to a new school year, and appreciate Thais Hunter and her efforts on the budget side of things, and so on and so forth, and linked to an article. The district says this was not interfering with election, just pointing out how everything is working well. I'd like to know your takes on it. Do you think, this all came out yesterday, the tweets did, do you think that Dr. Joseph is meddling in this election?
Me and Aaron, we made it very clear that he is definitely interfering with the election. However, he wanted to be creative by doing that. It was definitely a move that was inappropriate, and this is not the first time he's interfered with our campaign. He did it, or there were representatives that came out to our first forum that also interfered with our forum, where they wanted to come back and redirect some things that were said during the forum, data that we presented. So this is not the first time. This is the second time that he's definitely, or MNPS has involved themselves in our election.
And Aaron, I'll go to you next, because you and Fran talked to Phil today as part of our story. So if you want to echo what you said earlier today?
Yeah, I will. And, you know, I've read the comments on Facebook, I've read the comments on Twitter, and, you know, what's concerning is that folks are alluding to that Dr. Joseph is interfering. And I'm an idealist, and so, I don't, personally, I don't think that it's a Joseph-direct thing until proven otherwise, but I see it as a school district. And so, the thing that is disappointing is that my neighbor, who was a school teacher, reached out to me and then quote said, "I'm disgusted that this would come out as a representation of the voice of the entire district." Now, I do want to put something into context. Thais Hunter was the Budget Chair, and so, in that capacity, I do think that Metro is within their rights to publicly thank her for the job that she did. However, where my concern truly is, is just the timing of it all. The reality is, is that voters are trying to make a decision, and how, just, it's a simple perspective, and this is not, this is not me making an attempt to say that Metro is guilty or innocent. I, you know, I support the Board. You know, we need a fully functioning Board and a Central Office that has it together. However, people in the community see it as a tipping of the scale, and that is concerning. And I think we all have ran our race, and the Board, the Central Office, they're aware that there's a campaign going on, and Thais Hunter is running her race too. She's running an aggressive race as well. And so, I think that we have to take advantage of these public forums, like you've given us the opportunity tonight, to let our voices be heard without that tipping of the scale. And that's what it appears to be. That's my opinion, and that's a consensus from the community.
Earl?
So for me, this is all new. I actually, when I stepped into your studio this evening, was informed of what had actually taken place as it relates to the tweeting and the issues. And one of the things that I definitely wanted to stand on was to get away from the conflict of adults and focus, and bring the focus of the Board back on children. I am a little bit disgruntled, but somewhat taken aback, because at the end of the day, Mrs. Hunter actually endorsed me to run, when she decided she was going to run for juvenile court clerk. She's actually the first person to sign my petition. We had a full conversation and addressed, me being, I didn't want to do it without her permission or respect, out of respect for her being the sitting Board Member. She decided she was going to run for a different office, and so, I did this with her blessing. She signed in space number two to leave number one for my wife, of course. But, you know, so all of this, this tweeting and this back and forth, do I feel that Dr. Joseph is actually meddling in the race? I don't know that he's meddling, but it's definitely, it's not giving us even playing ground or a platform to stand on as it relates to all of us, you know, vying for the same seat.
Fair enough. I do want to mention what Thais Hunter texted to Phil Williams today, as just trying to be fair here. She said, "I don't need Dr. Joseph's, or Dr. Joseph, excuse me, or MNPS assistance. I'm going to crush and demolish both of them. Four years from now, they too will still be disgruntled. Watch me whip." So that was, again, was a text from Thais Hunter today to News Channel 5's Phil Williams, asking about this appearance of election meddling just a few days before this election, coming up Thursday, by the way. I do want to jump to the lines right now. We're going to move on with this show. Ann is holding on so patiently. Ann, thank you. What's your question?
Well, I was confused, and I'm terrible with names.
That's okay.
The young lady that's running for office said she had five young boys, but did she mention if they all attended public schools or not? I know she said she had her own academy, but do your children go to public schools? And on Phil Williams' reporting, he's doing a very valuable job. I'm not disgruntled. I'm very pleased with my life, but I am a former Metro employee, and after lodging a sexual harassment complaint, my job was mysteriously done away with four weeks after I filed my complaint. I had done 17 years of service as the classified employee with Metro at the time. I fought and got my retirement, and I'm enjoying it with my grandchildren, so I'm not disgruntled. But it gets pushed under the rug. The union is not recognized by the Director of Metro Schools. You don't have a voice. It's not worth your money to hire an attorney to try and fight for your job. I applied for over 60 positions with Metro Schools, but the best thing that ever happened to me was my retirement and the time I've had with my family. The three people running for office seem very intelligent, and I'd be proud for any one of you to get a position with Metro School Board. Please do what's right for the children. Please stand up for the classified who don't have a voice. And please stand firm against whatever director you have, because there is an old-boy circuit that is running administration on Brandsford Avenue, and somebody needs to do something about it.
And thank you for calling in tonight, and we'll get your question answered here. Fran, you mentioned you have five boys. Do they attend Metro Nashville Public Schools?
They do, and I apologize. I was trying to, I was trying to be obedient with my time. I do, I have five boys, again, they are all in Metro Schools or attended Metro Schools. I have two sons that actually are in college. I have one at Middle Tennessee State University and the other one at Tennessee State University. And I just want to, if I can, respond to Ann. I appreciate your comment, and you're exactly right. That's what's going on at Brandsford Avenue right now. We have to have a voice that's going to stand up for our teachers. I've been contacted by so many teachers that just say, you know, for the past four years, we just haven't had that voice. You know, teachers didn't get raises this year. Our budget is in crisis. You know, you have so many different concerns. We have children leaving our district. We have teachers leaving our districts. And as it was mentioned earlier during the, during our segment, you know, we're in a situation now that, you know, teachers are just disgusted, and we have to get this right. So I appreciate your question.
I do have a question for you all. What do you all feel is the biggest challenge facing both MNPS as a whole and the school board right now? Earl, I want to start with you on that. The biggest challenge?
The biggest challenge to me is obviously the budget. You know, the budget is chronically underfunded, and speaking as, even as a former employee in Support Services, which has been kind of almost just whittled down, you know, to the bare bones. I do feel that we need to, as a community, as Nashville, do a better job in investing in education all around, but our budget is just, it's just in crisis, and we can't, we can't make the necessary changes. We can't, we can't move forward until we have more money to do so. So for me, it would be, it would be the budget.
Okay. Aaron?
That's a good question.
And I want to ask you, narrow it down to one. The biggest?
Well, in recent weeks, you know, I'm running a platform that is about leadership, that is about literacy, and that is about listening. So, you know, my answer is a, it's a compound answer, but, you know, I'm led to believe that our city is still struggling from an epic lack of trust, and the reality is, and we are seeing it unfold on the news, is that the school board isn't exempt from that. But I think that that reality can change. The budget is an issue, and I think, more importantly for me, and what really lit the fire under me to run for this position, is when I look at student outcomes. You know, I work at an after-school program, I run an after-school program where we service students Monday through Friday, five days a week, two months during, throughout the summer, with a huge focus on moving the needle in literacy. And when you look at the literacy data, particularly for District 6, and you see that 50% of our elementary schools have not been able to pass the 30% threshold of proficiency in literacy, that's alarming. That's an issue. And so, for me, it would be student outcomes.
Fran?
Well, you know, there's so many different layers to pull back here and peel back, and one of the things that Aaron just spoke about was literacy. And one of the things that is dear to my heart, again, you heard me say I have a passion for our children and our teachers. When we took the step to cut 81 reading recovery teachers, that was huge for me. And that just spoke that we're not really paying attention, and we're not understanding the importance of making sure we bridge the gap with those first and third graders. By the time, over half of them, by the time they hit the third grade, they don't know how to read or comprehend. So we, when we cut those valuable reading recovery teachers that are nationally accredited, where we spent over $1 million on their training, we didn't get that right. And this year, they don't have any support, and those teachers are not going to be able to use their accreditation. So I have so many different reasons why, but one of the main reasons why, important to me, is our teachers and our students.
Let's jump back to the lines. We have Linda on the line with a question tonight. Hi, Linda.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to make a comment. If the Director of Schools did not receive such a ridiculously high salary, plus all the other perks he gets, there would be more money for the teachers than other employees at the school.
All right. Well, let's talk about that salary. You guys have any thoughts on that?
Well, you know, the reality is, perception is reality, and listen, I think it's best that, you know, what type of school board member I would be. So, and so, I'm trying to preface this comment by saying, the reality is, when you look at the salaries of the other directors, school directors, yes, there has been a pay increase, but that's because the budget has increased. And so, I'm not too alarmed by Dr. Joseph's salary in particular. I think that it is a big job to do, to run the schools. So for me, it's not a conversation of his salary. And I think that, you know, the tail end of her comment was that we will have more money in the schools. I think that's only part of the equation. As Board Members, we have to advocate higher, we have to advocate more, both at the council level and at the state level, to make sure that our budget is fully funded, so that our teachers are adequately paid as well. But whether it was Dr. Joseph, or you fill in a blank of who our Director is, it's a big job to do. And the reality is, is that the current Board Members, they, they got that salary up to that amount, so I don't think that that's a specific thing that, you know, he didn't, he didn't set the salary coming in. It's an offer that the school board members have actually approved prior to him arriving.
Anybody else want to chime in on that one?
Well, I, without actually definitely repeating everything that Mr. McGee has already said, I do believe that, you know, we have to keep in mind where we live. We're in a growing city, which we all know, and that is expanding constantly. And so, you know, we have to be able to compete. And so, I don't think that Dr. Joseph's salary is, outclassifies him. I think he is paid appropriately for the job he's actually doing. And like Mr. McGee said, I don't think, I don't know that cutting his salary would actually do that much for what we actually need. So, that's just my take on it.
I appreciate that question, because there is a lot in this, in this equation when it comes to salaries. First, yes, his salary is pretty much, I think he's about overpaid more than the mayor. I think he's pretty much can pay more than the mayor. So he's the CEO of Metro Schools. He is the CEO. So there is a fiscal responsibility to our schools and to our teachers, making sure things are moving forward. When you create jobs, high-paying positions, it definitely does take away from the bottom line, and also the consulting fees. That takes away from the bottom line. $7.5 million shortfall with our Title I funds. To predict and be so negligent to predict 1,200 more students that will be a part of our student base, that was negligent. So we got punished for that. So now, we have to take it away from the rainy day funds. And so, if we're taking away from the rainy day funds, then what about things that we need to take care of? So it's, it's just, it's just, we have to be more fiscal responsible. And I do think that a lot of the things that we're seeing, as far as the consulting fees, the created positions that are very high-paid salaries, it does affect things that we need to be responsible for.
With that $7.5 million shortfall this year, in light of that, I'm sure that you all have taken a hard look at the budget as it stands. Are there areas that you feel that are, there's some overfunding being done and some underfunded areas? I really want specifics here. How would you change things around if you were in a school board seat?
I think, you know, the actions that I've seen Metro take into play, some challenging things had to be, challenging decisions, you know, there were folks at Central Office that, that lost their jobs. There were, I forget the number of reading recovery staff that were, they were, they actually, they had the opportunity to be, become reading coaches at other schools. And so, but when I look at the budget, for me, I've said it time and time again, that every line item has to be, has to have a direct correlation to student outcome. And so, you know, there, there is a high price that's being paid for consulting. I think that there is a balance that you have to strike. You know, we, our teachers, our staff, they do need professional development, so that has to happen, but like, just like I tell my staff, and, you know, I have a Board that oversees me as a CEO, Executive Director of a local nonprofit, and the reality is, is that we can never make decisions at the expense of students, at the expense of our student outcome. And so, those are my thoughts when I, when I think about the budget. But for me, when you talk about specifics, it's just making sure that all of our line items are a direct, have student outcomes tied to the end, to the end of each one of those.
Earl, anything stick out to you?
Definitely what's in the best interest of kids. When I look at the fact that our, especially our Support Services Department, you know, definitely there needs to be some reallocating and some reorganizing of how funding gets spent. Parent involvement and parent engagement is the key to everything as it relates to successful students. Wrote a whole dissertation on it, and definitely believe in it. You can't get a productive student. We have children that are coming to school every day, that are hungry, that are tired, that are socially, emotionally deprived, right? And so, before teaching and learning can take place, whether you have a Level 5 teacher and a 4.0 student, we have to create an environment for learning. And I believe that if we invested more in our support systems as it relates to family and children, we would be more successful. So definitely, I do believe there could be some reallocation of funds as it relates to meeting the needs of children and families.
And when you say support staff, what are some of those roles?
So, whether it be a community achieve site manager, which looks at creating community schools, that, and with those pillars, you're looking at parent engagement, you're looking at community partnerships. When you look at the family involvement specialist role, which I formerly once held, that has been dissolved. We actually worked in the school system by cluster to work with principals to create parent engagement opportunities, and work with principals with professional development for their staff, things of that nature, wraparound services and support. So you have not only just your, your school council, but you have STARS, you have Centerstone, you have Vanderbilt, you have a lot of sources that are coming into the schools and actually wrapping around and supporting the needs of children and families. When we can better organize that and better fund those opportunities for every, that's what equity is, not just for a specific space, but for everyone, we would have a more productive community.
Fran?
I, you know, I, you know, here's the thing. The budget, we, as a Board Member, we have to take an aggressive look at the Board, I mean, at the budget, in order for us to move our schools forward, in order for us to make sure that we support, again, it goes back to our teachers and our students, support staff, yes, our bus drivers. We don't want to leave them out. All of these different parts make up what a successful school will look like, or a district will look like. And right now, we're not there. We have to get there. there. And unfortunately, when you have board members, seven board members, who basically give them an open checkbook, and I'm talking about Dr. Joseph, then we'll never change this budget. So in order for us to move forward and make sure that we are making sure the line items equal the responsibilities, we have to get a handle on this budget first.
Okay. And we'll take another quick call before we take our one break this hour. We have Gail on the line. Hi, Gail.
Hi. I have a question. And it's about the lottery money. I was thinking that it was going toward the Board of Education. Is that correct?
No. No, I think we can all say that across the board. It does not. No. So I'm glad we can answer that one. That was a quick one. Thank you. That's the quickest answer we've had across the board. And I do believe if you go on the lottery's website, it will spell out where that money goes. That's pretty standard for every state who, who gears their lottery money towards education. So check out the lottery website. Start there and it should just spell it out for you. And then you won't have any more questions about it. Okay, we're going to take our one quick break. If you want to get on the line to have your question answered, 615-737-plus is the number to call. We are talking to the candidates from District 6 for the Metro National Public Schools School Board. Stay with us.